Okay, good morning. We're going to call the meeting to order. Good morning. Grant, good morning, means go sit. Thank you. Hi, I'm June Zay. I'm the vice chairman of the county board. We have the B team up here today. Adam Johnson's here for the clerks, so I want to welcome you to the meeting. Before we call the meeting to order, I want to begin with our -- before we begin our agenda, may I ask that we observe a moment of silence in honor of the victims of the tragic shooting in Lyle on Friday. Retired Illinois State Police Officer Gregory Reeves was killed. Illinois State Trooper Kateen Bullock and retired Special Agent Lloyd Graham were also shot and hospitalized and are in stable condition. We're thinking of them and their families and friends. With the pledge of allegiance, may I ask Member Kudjuski to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. For invocation today, we have Rabbi Andrea Kozlowski from Itzam Shaheim in Plumbur.
Good morning. Jewish people around the world at this time are reading in the Hebrew Bible, in the Hebrew Scripture, also referred to as Old Testament, in the book of Exodus. And in the book of Exodus, we are in the midst of reading about the plagues that are befalling the Egyptians. And it brings to mind this idea of what modern-day plagues are still plaguing our society today. And with that thought in mind, let us pray together. O heavenly Father, help us to recognize the plagues that separate us, those which cause fear, indifference, and bring sorrow. Help us to build up and create bridges of peace, fulfillment, and hope for one another, to work together to strengthen our communities, and help us to seek peace between all communities of humankind. Help us to grow in word and indeed enrich us with your peace and your guidance, imbue us with a strong sense of integrity as we embark on the work of building, strengthening, and healing our world. In whose ever name we pray, let us say together, amen.
Thank you for your roll call, please. Covert, Desart, Deceani, Eckhoff, Elliott, Hart, Healy, Kudjuski, Larson, Noonan, Ozog, Pachowski, Renahan, Rutledge, Selman, Tornatori, and Zay. Here. Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to chairman's report. We have a busy day today. First item we have is Four Chaplains Sunday Proclamation. May I ask Steve Fixler and Member Bob Larson to join me at the podium? Well, each year at this time, we remember an extraordinary story of selflessness and service, that of the four chaplains. Lieutenant George Fox, Lieutenant Alexander Good, Lieutenant John Washington, and Lieutenant Kirk Polig were onboard the SS Dorchester, a transport ship carrying 902 servicemembers in the cold waters off of Newfoundland on February 3, 1943. The ship was torpedoed by a German U-boat and hit. Through the pandemonium, according to witnesses, the four armly chaplains brought hope and calm in the darkness. They then gave their life preservers to four servicemen, and together the four chaplains prayed and went down with the ship. We commemorate their faith and sacrifice for others with our annual proclamation. Seventy-seventh anniversary of Four Chaplains Sunday, whereas on Sunday, February 2, 2020, marks the seventy-seventh anniversary of the Four Chaplains Sunday, commemorating one of the most inspiring acts of heroism in World War II. And whereas four chaplains representing Methodist, Roman Catholic, Jewish, Dutch Reform faiths gave their own life jackets to four American servicemen and directed the young soldiers to lifeboats. And whereas, with their arms linked together, while they prayed together, the four US United States Army chaplains sank in the cold waters off the North Atlantic with the torpedoed USS Dorchester. And whereas, the Combined Veterans Association sponsors the annual remembrance service remonelling the memory of these four chaplains. And whereas, the Marine Corps League is the host organization of this year's memorial program at 1:00 PM at the Hospital Chapel at Edwards Heinz Jr. VA Medical Center in Heinz, Illinois. Therefore, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the County Board, and County Board members do hereby proclaim Sunday, February 2, 2020, as Four Chaplains Sunday, in DuPage County to honor the memory of the four chaplains who made the ultimate sacrifice to save lives for four young soldiers. Pass on the 20th day of January 2020. Is there a motion? A second motion? And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Steve, want to say a few words?
Once again, thank you very much. I will be speaking this on behalf of everybody here in DuPage County this Fri -- Friday. This Sunday at Heinz Hospital, 1:00. It's open to the public at the chapel, and please come if you can. Again, thank you very much.
Just briefly, I know you -- I always talk about this every year, but we talk about public service, what it means to serve. We've heard about a couple tragedies this weekend. Any of you who've seen the movie Titanic, saw the chaos that occurred on that ship as it was going down. Imagine somebody knowing that's going to happen and knowingly giving their life up for somebody else. That's what it means to serve. That's what they did. And I spent 20 years in the Marine Corps, and I was honored to serve with a lot of men and women who were a lot better than me. And these are examples of those sorts of people, so I'm glad we continue to honor them. Thank you.
Okay, the next item. This hurts a little since myself and Member Healy and Member Deceani went to Elmhurst College, but we're here to recognize the North Central College football team. We are fortunate enough to have with us the NCAA Division III champion North Central I'd like to welcome North Central College -- yes, I also want to call up District Five members. Thank you. I'd like to welcome North Central College President Troy Hammond, Marty Sauer, Vice President for Enrollment and Management and Athletics, Jim Miller, Athletic Director, Jeff Thorne, Head Football Coach, and some of the players. And there's a big list here of these guys. And this is why they're football players, because they're much bigger than all of us. Tala Aaron, Brian Boecamp, Jake Beasley, Sheramore Clark, Tyler Egan, Terrence Hill, Alex Rose, Rick Streba, and Dokate Dakota. Dakota, which did I ask?
Kamens.
Kamens. So here's the guys that made it happen. We're so happy, celebrate the school's first Division III championship, and congratulate you guys, the players, the coaches, and the fans. Read the proclamation, but a little bit about, you know, college athletes, a lot of kids. My son's going to North Park now, which is in the CCIW, which is a good conference. But we see, you know, only 5% of high school students go on to play collegiately at all levels, Division I, Division II, and Division III. And that's a big commitment for these guys, and to not only be athletes, but be student athletes. It means a lot, because there's a lot of practice, there's a lot of hard time, that they're working hard for playing, but they go back and they correct the books and they study, and they do both, and they should be commended also for that. So let me read the proclamation. Whereas the players and coaching staff and alumni of North Central College football team have proven they possess a solid foundation of teamwork, commitment, and talent, building towards a championship season. As whereas the Cardinals won the NCAA Division III national championship with a 41-14 victory over the University of Wisconsin Whitewater at the 2019 Amos Lonzo Stag Bowl in Shenandoah, Texas. Whereas, on their historic playoff run, the Cardinals also defeated perennial football powerhouse University of Mount Union. And whereas, the Cardinals finished the season 14-1 with 11 straight wins and averaged 45 points per game in the Division III playoffs. And whereas, the college has remarkable history of succession national championship, having won 40 national championships, including 19 for men's cause country, six for men's indoor track and field, six for men's outdoor track and field, four for men's swimming and diving, three for women's triathlon, and one for women's basketball, and now one for football. Now whereas, North Central College has garnered 17 of those national championships in the last decade. Whereas, we commend the student athletes, coaches, athletic administrators, and the entire college community for their passion, spirit, camaraderie, and character through this incredible season, for the team's positive representation of DuPage County. Now therefore be resolved that Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the County Board, and the County Board members do hereby recognize and commend North Central Football Team and Coaching Staff for its NCAA Division III national championship and for being a valued residence of DuPage County. Pass this 20th day of January. Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Move and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
I would, yes.
Nope, I'm talking to the president.
I just wanted to remind people about the big rally coming up on Friday, so go ahead and talk about that.
Oh, okay. Well, first of all, I just wanted to thank you all for this opportunity to be present here at this meeting and celebrate this historic victory for the college. North Central College prides itself in helping our students exceed their personal best through the course of their education and find direction in life. And that takes place both in the classroom and outside, in their civic engagement and their civic involvement, as well as then, you know, on the gridiron in this case. And we couldn't be more proud of what Coach Thorne and his coaching staff and all these young men have done to bring this amazing victory to North Central College. It's really hard to win a national championship in football, and they've accomplished something amazing in this process and brought a great, I think, notoriety as well to Naperville and to DuPage County in the process. And so we're just extremely proud of their accomplishment, and we'll be celebrating on Friday with a procession in Naperville led by police and fire through downtown Naperville to Benidetti Whirly Stadium, where there will be a ceremony and presentation at 4:00 Friday afternoon in Benidetti Whirly Stadium on the North Central College campus, so we invite you all to that. And I want Coach Jeff Thorne to make a few remarks as well, if he's willing to.
First and foremost, I just want to thank you for taking time from your meeting today to recognize what these guys accomplished. It really means a lot to us. It's a great opportunity. We brought some T-shirts, handful of these Stag Bowl champion T-shirts, to be handed out to anybody that wants them. Just a quick history lesson, though, to give you a little bit of background.
It's an extra large.
I've got two larges. I grew up in Wheaton, so I've been in DuPage County my entire life. My family lives in Naperville now. My father was a longtime coach at Wheaton Central and Wheaton Morville South High School. And when he took this program over, everybody told him he's crazy, you can't win at North Central. And his dream in 2002 was to win a national championship. So when I was able to hand him the trophy, and our coaching staff, and these young men finished his job and his dream, it was my dream come true. And I just, I can't thank you enough for the time that you've given us today and the recognition. Hopefully, we'll see you on Friday, and hopefully, we can come back next year and celebrate again. Thanks.
Anybody else want to -- Jim? Just a quick thing. This is not only a proud day for Naperville and for DuPage County, but for all the CCIW. Although Jim, myself, and Pete graduated from Elmhurst, don't boo me.
I didn't graduate, no, just kidding.
Okay. We're very proud of everything you guys have done, and I'm very proud to be involved in North Central for many years. But what people have to understand is that our colleges, especially North Central, have an integral part of what we do here in DuPage. Many of our employees graduated from North Central College. Several of our employees teach at North Central College, and we've had several board members who have been on the Board of Directors of North Central College. So it's a long heritage in DuPage, the relationship between North Central College and the county of DuPage. And I'm just very proud that we can now honor this, and I'm going to be even prouder when I'm standing in Washington in four weeks with the chairmans of Baton Rouge County and with Collier County, who represent the CCIW two -- or I'm sorry, the NCAA II and III winners. And we're all going to have our jerseys on and taking some pictures there, because it's a proud day for counties when we're doing this, and people don't realize the relationship between the counties and their colleges. So you young men have done a great job looking for internships here at the county. We need smart guys and girls to come here, and you may even see a few of your professors hanging around the halls. So thank you, and Troy, congratulations, and to the entire team.
You want to take a quick picture here with the proclamation, if we can?
I can just stand in front of Ricky here.
Yeah. I'm up in a step, and I'm just eating with this. I got my stomach full then.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Yep, there you go. Thank you, and we'll pass those out. Chairman misses all the good stuff. See, that's not bad. Next item on our chairman's report is Downers Grove Sanitary and Wheaton Sanitary District presentations. We have Matt Larson and Nick Meneghini to come to the podium. We also want to acknowledge Jeff Walker and Wally Van Buren, who are the chairmans of the two districts. So gentlemen, thank you for coming out here today.
Good morning. Hard act to follow. I'm Wally Van Buren, President of the Board of Trustees of Downers Grove Sanitary District. And I'm proud to introduce Nick Menegh, who will be giving you a report on our operation, which we do at your pleasure, and we thank you for that. Nick Menegh.
Thanks, Wally. The management of Downers Grove Sanitary District currently includes myself, Nick Menegh. I've been there for 15 years as the general manager. We recently acquired Assistant General Manager Amy Underwood as part of our succession plan. Our assets that we own include a wastewater treatment center in Downers Grove. I think some of the board members have been there before. It's an 11 MGD-capacity treatment plant, provides tertiary treatment, ammonia, meets all the standards set by IEPA in order to discharge into the east branch of the DuPage River. We've also managed to create an energy-neutral wastewater treatment plant in Downers Grove, which is kind of a unique situation for a wastewater treatment plant. We're actually have the capability to be a small power generating station creating renewable energy at the facility. We also own all of the sewer system in our service area, which includes 250 miles of sewer mains, sanitary sewer mains. We have 20,000 customers that are connected to the sewers. The system dates to 1904, and as a result, it's portions of it are quite old and leaky, so we do get a significant amount of infiltration and inflow during storm events that we absolutely handle and deal with and treat appropriately. From a financial standpoint, typical service cost for a customer, we charge $1.70 for 1,000 gallons. Typical customer of 8,000 gallons is paying $1,360 per month for that. Our monthly service fee is $17. And then we also collect small tax, income, or I'm sorry, a property tax that totals about $40 a month per house. So the average cost to a typical house in Downers Grove in our service area is about $34 a month. We have our net fixed assets that are depreciating is worth about $74 million. Most of it's our sewer system, and then there's a big chunk of it is our plant. The cash we have right now is about $4.7 million, saving a little bit of money for any capital improvements, and then we also have to have an operating reserve. And our long-term debt is limited to a zero-load 3.5 million loan that we took out in 2009, 2010 timeframe, when the state was offering a zero-interest loan program. So really don't have any debt to speak of. We pride ourselves on being accountable. We report a lot of activities at a lot of different levels. We report to the county on a financial basis. We also report to the state on a financial basis. All our books are open. We have all of our audit on our website. We also do a lot of environmental compliance reporting as well. We have extensive compliance reporting that goes to the state and the federal government just to verify the quality of the water that we're putting in the receiving stream. So quite accountable. We also are very collaborative. We work together at many different levels of government with other groups. DuPage Municipal Partnering Initiative is very important for us, certain procurements we're doing in a joint effort with other municipalities. We work very closely with the village on local construction and other administrative types of activities. We're involved with SCAERS and the grease-receiving operation that we do, and we also help them with some of their education programs. We're one of the founding and more involved members with, on the county level, with the DuPage River, Salt Creek Work Group, as well as on the Illinois level and the federal level with the wastewater associations on those levels. And then finally, we pride ourselves on being extremely transparent. We have open, accessible meetings, always have public participation. We have a comprehensive web presence. Our website has just about every tidbit and morsel of information that we have in-house available. We have an annual open house, and several board members have been to that, and we really enjoy doing that every year. Have a lot of Boy Scouts come and eat donuts and drink juice and take a tour of the plant. We have an annual newsletter that goes to all of our customers that has a lot of information for them. And we also take pride in a lot of school-stem partnerships. So we have science classes at the elementary, junior high, high school, and college level that come through the plant on a routine basis. Pretty much every seventh grader in town has been through our plant. That's pretty much all I have for Downers Grove.
Matt? Good morning, everybody. My name is Jeff Walker. I'm the current president of the trustees of the Wheaton Sanitary District. Thank you all for having us come and make this presentation. I would just like to thank all of the staff and people that work at the sanitary district for the great work they do there and how hard that they work, and that they continue to win wastewater awards. That makes us one of the most efficient operating facilities, not only in the county, the state, but the United States. We currently have a new executive director that has just taken over the helm, and we're embarking on a new multimillion-dollar project to replace our infrastructure on the north side of Wheaton. And Matt Larson, our new director, our new executive director, I'd like to introduce, who will help guide us through that process. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff. Yes, as Jeff just indicated, we have a great, dedicated staff at the sanitary district. We have some snapshots of several of the staff members up there. Our district is very similar to what Nick talked about at Downers Grove, so I'll try not to repeat, but we have a lot of similar activities and programs as Downers Grove Sanitary District, along with the other sanitary districts throughout the state. Our staff is broken up into different groups, though, that all collaborate together. We have an operations group, a maintenance group, a lab group, and then our administrative or kind of front-end group. And they all work together to do, as Jeff said, great things for the district. And those great things are shown through some awards that our facility has been acknowledged with throughout the years, both on operations of the facility and also some specific awards for individuals at the facility. And that's a testament, not just to those individuals, but to the team that we have assembled at the sanitary district. This is a picture itself of our facility. Our facility serves about 63,000 people here in DuPage County, most of City of Wheaton, parts of Carroll Stream, Glen Ellen, Winfield, and then portions of unincorporated DuPage County. We have assets that include, we don't own our entire collection system, but we do have some sewer assets out in the system that both is small diameter and large diameter sewers, and all that water flows to this facility here, which is located close to the Cantini Park at basically the intersections of Schaffner and Mack Roads. As Nick mentioned, they have their open house once a year. We have a similar event in the summer, the Corn Boil. I'm sure some of you have attended that in the past, and we look forward to those who haven't attended, attending in the future. Also, if anybody ever is interested in a tour, we're more than welcome and happy to give tours. I would recommend maybe doing it in warmer climates, warmer days than cooler days, but we're happy to take you whenever you'd like. One thing I want to note, though, is, and I think there's sometimes some confusion on this, City of Wheaton owns and operates their collection system. The water from that collection system does convey to our facility, but they have separate staff and separate control of their collection system, which is separate from the Wheaton Sanitary District's system. To stay current, both from the regulatory standpoint and to combat constantly aging infrastructure, we do have capital projects going on from time to time. Wanted to highlight a couple of those here in the upper left-hand corner. We recently replaced our old sand filters with newer disc filter technology. It increased the capacity of those, along with reducing the operations and maintenance required. Currently, as we speak, we're replacing our disinfection system. We did have a bleach disinfection system, and starting on May 1, we will have a UV disinfection system. In the bottom corner here, we just relocated some of our electrical gear with the floodplain maps being revised recently. Our existing, or some of our existing electrical infrastructure was in the floodplain, which is not a good thing. So we just completed a very successful project to relocate that up on top of a hill, so we should be fine for any size storm that happens to roll through.
Never seen that.
Well, if that gets flooded, we have a lot bigger problems. And as Jeff alluded to, we do have some projects that are coming up. I want to highlight two of them here. One is providing sewers in an area that's currently unsewed. They're on septic tanks, and we're very excited about extending the sewer system and getting more and more folks on the sewer system so that water can be treated and not in septic systems. And also, the big project, we call our North Side Interceptor Project. It's roughly a five-mile pipeline that will extend from our plant located on Schaffner Road through Wheaton up to Carroll Stream. It's replacing an aging pipe that is aging and in need of increasing its capacity. That's a project we anticipate will be starting essentially a year or so from now. And for anybody who lives in Wheaton or travels through Wheaton, you will probably see the remnants of a 48-inch diameter pipe that is being installed. You can imagine the size of the trench and the number of trucks that will be required to do that work. So it's a very important project. It'll be the largest project in the history of the sanitary district, capital dollars-wise. And like I said, we're anticipating that will, construction will start about a year from now. We do have a monthly bill that we send out to our customers. We do not levy property taxes. The bill is 100% based on usage of water. It's composed of two different charges, basically a fat, a flat fee and a variable fee, which varies depending on how much water is consumed. And to be cognizant that all the water that people consume doesn't go in the sewer, we offer a number of rebate or credit programs, and I've highlighted a couple up here. Anything from irrigation to leaks to pools in the summer, and obviously this time of year, ice rinks is one that we have. And I want to get the word out, not if you're familiar with these, I was just presenting in another group, and they weren't aware of these types of credits. So they're on the website or please stop by our offices if you think you might be eligible or know people who might be eligible for these. And to wrap things up, I want to talk about shared services. Currently, we have shared services agreements between us in DuPage County and the City of Wheaton, and we have a number of things that we share amongst the different entities. I'm also right now speaking with folks from the Forest Preserve to see if there's opportunities for us to share services there, obviously with the end goal of reducing costs for our common customers and residents. With that, I am all done.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the updates from Downers Grove and Wheaton. The chairman of the county board has the responsibility of appointing the trustees that oversee these two entities, which are viewed as high-performing agencies. The Wheaton Sanitary District has been a great partner of our Public Works Department, with sharing services, we're practical, and always looking for joint purchasing operations. And Downers Grove Sanitary District was featured in a PBS NewsHour last year. The district was featured for its grease hauling program and its net-zero operations, meaning its wastewater treatment plant generates as much energy as it uses. So I want to thank Matt and Nick for giving us that update and coming out here today. Thank you very much. A few other items today. I'd like to thank the board members and residents who turned out to our public meeting related to Route 83 corridor plan. It's important to hear the ideas shared by people. It's important to hear the ideas shared by people impacted by transportation and community development needs along this busy roadway, which carries traffic through several Dupage communities. Want to thank Paul Haas and the building department and staff for shepherding that project and keeping the folks informed as the plan comes together. Finally, I know I speak for Chairman Cronin and the rest of my colleagues on the board when I convey our deepest condolences to the family of Sheriff Richard Doria, who passed away at the age of 92 on January 17th. I've asked our current sheriff, Jim Endrick, to share a few words in the memory of Sheriff Doria, who served the county for over 35 years. Jim? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. It's been a rough week. So Sheriff Richard P. Doria, excuse me, entered the U.S. Marine Corps in 1945. He was assigned to a military police division through 1952, when he received his honorable discharge. Although Sheriff Doria made it very clear time and time again, "Once a Marine, always a Marine." Richard Doria began his political career as an elected township constable. In 1962, he became a member of the Dupage County Sheriff's Office and continued through the ranks for 14 years when he was appointed as undersheriff. Sheriff Doria was elected to the office of sheriff for Dupage County in 1978, where he provided leadership to his staff and citizens for this county for 18 years. Some of his big accomplishments was he created our crime laboratory, the establishment of our major crime investigation unit, our hazardous device unit, and he incepted the establishment of our correctional facility. So I mean, he had some really, really big accomplishments. He had enough faith in me to hire me back in 1996. Came back 23 years later and he endorsed me to run for sheriff. I remember when I was a new recruit sitting in his office, the first thing I ever heard from pretty much any policeman was what he said was, "Jim, when you come here, all I can say is just never lie. Whatever you do, lying will most likely be worse than anything that you did." And I really took that to heart. I carry that throughout my entire career. He had another quote, and it said, "This was my life. Everything I did that came out right, I was proud of." So at this moment, at this time, I'd like just a moment of silence for Sheriff Richard My friend, my mentor, my colleague, Sheriff Richard P. Doria, thank you for your service, and you will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. That's all I have on chairman's report. We're going to move to public comment. According to our county board rules, members of the public shall be afforded the time to address the board. Individuals' remarks shall not exceed three minutes in length, nor shall the total time provided exceed 30 minutes. Mr. Clerk? We have one person today, Mark Gill.
Good morning, vice chairman, members of the county board. My name is Mark Gill, and I am a managing partner of FMI Properties, which has an ordinance before you today for consideration. I'm better known as the owner-operator of the BP gas station at the corner of Route 53 and Butterfield Road. I have been serving the public from this location for the past 34 years. The ordinance before you today will allow me to update and modernize my facility, which was originally built in 1985. The new facility will be more attractive, introduce new conveniences and services, provide improved and safer access, create additional jobs and additional tax revenue for the county. This project also includes the acquisition of the former Chase Bank property, which is adjacent to my western boundary of the gas station. And this site will be razed, and we'll be introducing a new quick-service restaurant with a drive-through, and that will be operated by a national chain. Although it may seem like we are asking for much in terms of setbacks, in fact, we will be improving the setbacks as compared to existing conditions today. This will also increase the amount of green space we have, and then we have an extensive landscape plan to beautify those areas. I realize that gas station developments can sometimes be somewhat contentious. Here's what I can tell you about our situation. For the past three decades, I have served my community well and built a very close bond. We proudly support every school, religious institution, park district, homeowners' associations, Boy Scout troops, you name it, in our community. Everyone that comes to us for support gets it. I have such confidence in this bond that I took the initiative and informed the local community with details and drawings of our plans. This information was distributed to local homeowners' associations, and they passed it along to their residents, and then postings went up on neighborhood Facebook pages and nextdoor.com. In other words, the information went viral. So we took the absolute opposite approach of most gas station developers. We were very upfront with what our plans were. So let me tell you what happened at the initial zoning hearing. It was standing room only, and there was unanimous support for our project. When Chairman Cartel opened up the meeting for public comment, the accolades poured in. There was applause, there was laughter, and it was a festive atmosphere. It was about as much fun as a zoning hearing can be. And I'm quite certain the ZBA has never seen anything like that before. Ultimately, the ZBA voted unanimously to approve our project, and this was followed last week by the Development Committee, their unanimous vote as well, and today I am hoping to earn your vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That's all we have for public comment today. So we'll move on to the agenda to the consent, to have a motion on the consent items. Move by Mr. Healy, or moved by Mr. DeCiani. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Chaplin. Please call the roll.
DeCiani, Eckhoff, Elliott, Hart, Healy, Krajewski, Larson, Noonan, Ozog, Pacowski, Renahan, Rutledge, Selman, Tornatori, Zay, Chaplin, Covert, Desart.
All ice. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Move on to county board. Member Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of CBR 5120, appointment of Daniel Philidoo as a member of the 911 Board representing the sheriff.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Healy? Aye.
Krajewski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pacowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckhoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
That passes.
Member? Chairman Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of CBR 5220, appointment of Michael Tillman as a member of the 911 Board for Emergency Services.
Mr. Clerk, roll. Leave is granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of CBR 5520, amendment to expand border review compensation.
Leave is granted. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Healy. Move on to finance. Chairman Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move to combine agenda items A through E.
We have a motion to combine items A through E. Any objections? No objections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those items are combined.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would then move approval of FIR 3920, acceptance and appropriation to Dupage Animal Friends Foundation Coordination Grant in the amount of $20,000. The Friends Foundation unrestricted grant in the amount of $50,000. The Illinois Department of Economic Opportunity grant in the amount of $1,53,942. Additional appropriation for the Juvenile Transportation Fund in the amount of $50,000. An appropriation for the Corners Fee Fund in the amount of $41,500.
Okay. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pacowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckhoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
That passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of FIR 50-20, which is placing names on payroll.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finally, move approval of FIR 4920, budget transfers for various companies and accounting units.
Leave is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Larson. Move on to development. Chairman Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move approval of DCO 15-20, ordinance Z 1978, FMI Properties LLC, Development Committee Recommendation to Approve a Plan Unit Development, Conditional Use, and Permit for a Drive-Thru Establishment.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Larson?
I just want to say briefly, I was impressed to have somebody come here and give such a great presentation and work with the community in the fashion that they did to do this. This is what we love to see in terms of how we develop things here in the county, so it's nice to see that, and I thank you for the efforts you put into doing it that way.
Thank you. Mr. Elliott?
Yeah, and I just wanted to acknowledge, Mr. Gill, communities have model citizens. Sometimes those model citizens are human beings, other times they're businesses or corporations. And I think the experience that he just related about the feedback and the reaction that he got from the community is really a testament to both Mr. Gill and the business he operates down there. He's really been a leading pillar of that South Carolina community for many years, and so I want to thank you for that. It's my pleasure to support this today.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments? No? Roll call, please.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckhoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Krajewski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pacowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckhoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Krajewski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pacowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckhoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Krajewski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pacowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DeCiani?
Aye.
Eckhoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Krajewski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pacowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to ask for a motion to combine items D and F, and leave E separate, as it's an issue that came up in finance.
Second.
Both are contracts for a care center.
Okay. Motion to combine.
All right. Need a vote on that, or no? You got it.
Well, we combined it, so.
Okay. Very good.
All in favor?
There you go.
Opposed?
Thank you. Move on to HHS-P 3120. That's a contract purchase order for legal aid in Illinois in the amount of $30,758.10. And item F, which is HHS-P 3320, recommendation for approval of contract purchase order for washroom machinery for our care center in the amount of $35,000.
Leave is granted.
We'll go to the item E, which is, I make a motion to HHS-P 3220, recommendation approval for contract purchase order from Medline Industries in the amount of $60,000 for our care center for Linens. Authorization to travel for a Workforce Board Coordinator and the Director to go to Springfield, Illinois on February 5th through 6th to attend the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Monthly Meetings. Authorization to travel for the Director and a Board Coordinator for the DuPage Workforce Development to travel to Bloomington, Illinois on March 11th through 12th, also for Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Meetings. Authorization to travel for the Executive Director, Board Coordinator, and four managers to East Peoria, East Peoria, Illinois from April 27th through 29th to attend the Weowa Summit. Authorization to travel for a Board Coordinator and the Executive Director to Bloomington, Illinois, May 6th through 7th to attend Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Monthly Meetings. Authorization to travel to Springfield, Illinois, June 10th through 12th for a Board Coordinator and the Executive Director. Authorization to travel to Collinsville, Illinois, August 5th through 7th to attend Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Monthly Meetings for the Executive Director and a Board Coordinator. And authorization to travel to Springfield, Illinois, September 16th through the 17th for the Director, Board Coordinator, a career counselor, and an award winner to attend the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Meetings. And finally, last but not least, authorization to travel to Champaign, Illinois from October 14th through 15th to attend Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Meetings for the Executive Director and the Board Coord.
Leave as granted. Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Move on to Health and Human Services. Chairman D'Ciani?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee update, we've got a Valentine's push in our care center. We've got some 320 great people that have challenges from disabilities to seniors to kids, people with Alzheimer's and dementia, but they're all wanting to be loved, and we're looking to send love to them. So we've got our Valentine's fundraiser that's coming up for February 14th. It's a $2 donation, and we'll guarantee that every single member over there will get a nice little card. It's an oversized card. Our web link on that is weblinkdonorperfect.com, hashtag ValentineHearts2020. So please, if you're listening, jump on that and make a nice little donation, and thank you to our Communications Department for getting that message out there. With that, I have a little bit of an agenda. I would ask if we can motion, if sir motion to combine Items A through C, they're all items of CDBG.
Okay. Motion to combine Items A through C. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those are combined.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on HHS R4220, a resolution for recommendation or modification on the CDBG for the Village of Villa Park. Motion on HHS R4320, modification on a CDBG agreement between the Village of DuPage County and Villa Park for Washington Corridor Green Infrastructure. I move on item HSSR4420, modification with DuPage County and DuPage Habitat for Humanity for an extension. Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We roll call, please. D'Ciani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Kuduski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
D'Ciani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Kuduski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
D'Ciani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Kuduski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
D'Ciani?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of JPS 39-20, recommendation for the approval of contract purchase order to Wayne Incorporated for radiological equipment.
Before we go, the coroner is here. If anybody had questions, I know he's here for the meeting if we wanted to ask those questions from finance, or are we okay with it?
I think I have my question answered in finance.
Okay. Great.
That's what I said, I answered all the questions.
Thank you. Member Desart?
Yeah, I just wondered why the item said unforeseen equipment failure, something like that. Why was it unforeseen? Didn't you know that we were going to be?
Mr. Coroner?
Were you doing your budget originally? This is outside of your original budget because it was unforeseen? And I'm just wondering why it was overlooked after the fact of the budget process?
You mean, why didn't we put it on last year's budget? Is that the question?
This year's budget.
This year's budget. Basically, the evaluation by the company that Wayne Incorporated that does our maintenance came to me and said that this is a worsening problem as far as the age of the bulb or the radiation emitting bulb, and that it really, though it's still working, we need to address it.
So this company that does your maintenance regularly didn't foresee that this was, this piece of equipment was failing or starting to fail?
Well, it hasn't failed. It's either going to fail or not fail, and it's still working properly, but they made me aware that this is getting to a critical point.
Thank you.
So it's got an expected shelf life? And we're getting?
We're way past our expected shelf life. This probably should have been done five years ago, but it's still working fairly well. We did two x-rays this weekend, and it's still working, but when it fails, we have no backup.
Is this coming out of the coroner's fee fund as opposed to the general budget, correct?
Correct.
So it wouldn't have been in the budget?
I'm sorry?
So it wouldn't have been in the budget then, the general budget?
Well, it would have been in our coroner fee fund budget.
Right.
But.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Leave, leave as granted. Thank you, Mr. Coroner.
I approve of JPS 40-20, recommendation for approval of contract purchase order to West for legal books and updates.
Second most memorable rule. Question. Member Covert?
I brought this up last year as just a curious question. When will we start, are we making an effort to transition to digital?
Well, we have numerous computers in the law library that allow us to use software like West and Lexis and things like that. There's books that are online, but there's just some books that we get the updates on an annual basis. There's some books in there that don't have updates from 15 years ago, so they're transitioning little by little, but there's still some attorneys and judges who like to have the books.
Okay.
But I don't think, I don't think the digest, the actual law cases, once you pull them up on the computer, we still have some of the hardbound copies for like the Northeast Second and things like that.
Thank you.
Packet parts, that's what I was looking for.
Any other questions?
Thanks a lot.
Is there a request for leave?
Leave.
Leave is granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of JPS 41-20, recommendation for approval of contract purchase order to Integrated Solutions Consulting, Inc.
Leave is granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have removed approval of JPS 1-20, amendment to Resolution JPS 250-16, the Microgenics Corporations for Drug Testing and Analyzer and Drug Testing Supplies for the Probation Department.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Eckoff. Move on to legislative. Chairman Tornatori?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, under committee update, I'd like to thank Cheryl Marquet, her staff, Chip Humes, and our lobbyists and members of the Legislative Committee, who two weeks ago met and unanimously approved our 2020 state legislative agenda. This agenda represents a framework to guide us in our legislative priorities. Session in Springfield actually begins today. The document is fluid. It will change as new bills are introduced or changed in Springfield. We did isolate 10 priorities to begin with, and they are preserving local revenues, restoring the siting of small cell devices, extending our Emergency Telephone System Act, supporting the cost of local elections, increasing mental health funding, providing additional resources to combat the opioid epidemic, protecting the environmental health of our citizens, reducing the cost and size of local government, increasing the reimbursement of adult protective services, and banning the sale of commercially bred pets. As this process moves along, our committee will continue to meet and consider key bills that the county should oppose or support, and for informational purposes, we'll be bringing the 2020 federal legislative agenda to County Board later on next month. With that, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of LEG R3720, a resolution adopting the county's 2020 state legislative program.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Member Desart?
Hey, Chairman Tornatori, I appreciate that this is a fluid document. I was just wondering, I mean, is my understanding that this is kind of the marching orders we give to our lobbyists to take to Springfield?
Essentially.
Okay, I was just wondering, I know back in 2019, we gave our state electeds a binder of capital, capitals wish list. Sheriff Marquet emailed to me as well, but should our capital request be reiterated in this, in this document of marching orders to our lobbyists?
We can certainly, Jonathan's almost done compiling the 2020 list. It'll be a little bit smaller this year, but we can certainly, whenever you approve this, if you approve it today, we'll send it with the capital.
Okay. I am specifically passionate about the animal services, Phase Two of that building, and we were in Senator Holmes's office last week, and I just flat out asked him for $12 million to complete that project, and you know, kind of tongue in cheek, asking her for the whole chunk of money, but I just think that our request should be reiterated in this.
Okay, we can do that, sure.
Just that they certainly have it in here.
As I said, the document is fluid, so we can.
Right, no, and I appreciate that, thank you.
Sure. Member Chairman?
Thank you, Chairman, and I just wanted to thank staff and the chairman for updating the election portion of that, so I appreciate you updating, putting our concerns in there, so thank you.
Member Rutledge?
Thank you, Chairman. I was just talking with Member Hart about the small cell technology, and I am getting questions from City of Warrenville about that, and so just kind of putting it on the radar that that is an issue that's going to bubble up, I think, and we might have a proactive discussion about that before our whole communities kind of bombard us with that issue, so.
Okay, thank you. Member Desart?
I just wanted to say while we're having this discussion, maybe we should update the capital request, because I know the document that I presented to Senator Holmes said we wanted $10 million for the project and now $12 million, so just let's make sure we update all of our asks. Thank you.
Okay, Member D'Ciani?
Services front, I had mentioned at our last meeting that we've got a challenge with the Medicaid implementation for the ABA, which we had unanimously passed as a resolution from the county for people with autism. One in three of our children in DuPage are eligible for this because they are on Medicaid. We've, the implementation, this has been a little bit challenging because the Director of HFS, Secretary, when she wrote the language to the feds, indicated that folks that are BCBA's would have to either be a clinical psychologist and/or be a licensed social worker. There's about 14 of those providers in the state of Illinois. BCBA's are really the provider that should be providing ABA as a supervisory function as with private insurance. There's about 2,500 of those throughout the state of Illinois, just to, you know. So we realize that this is going to handcuff our legislation and the money, and really at the end of the day, the kids that need help, so I'll be working with Member Tornatori. Deb Conroy's already on this, but we really need to get this corrected because we've got funds that were passed in the budget. We have a law that was passed for compliance, but now the actual providers that they're choosing to be eligible are very limited, so we're going to be needing to make that change so our kids can actually get the help that they need. So that will be a legislative action that we'll be pursuing this cycle. But as Member Tornatori indicated, things are evolving, things come up. This just came up last week, otherwise I would have put it on the radar, so, but I'll be working with Member Tornatori on this as well, so thank you.
And for staff, I know we've come a long way. We do have a link to it where they can go in for the capital project, and breaks it out by representative district, county board district, congressional district, so that's a good thing. And please, ask people. I had a meeting with Representative Villa, I asked her for $20 million for paving Parkway, so, and she said she was going to ask Congressman Underwood for money, so if we don't ask, we won't get it, so always, always ask, and what's the worst I can say? No? So it's better than we are. To close, Member Tornatori?
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. We roll call, please. Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
D'Ciani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Kuduski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you very much. Move on to Public Works. Chairman Healy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of FMP 3520, a contract issued to interstate power systems to provide parts and labor for, to maintain and repair generators.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We roll call, please. Healy?
Aye.
Kuduski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
D'Ciani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Kuduski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
D.C.I.?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Krajewski?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
D.C.I.?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 42-20, recommendation for the approval of
Aye.
a contract to Imaging Systems, Inc., doing business as Integrated Document Technologies.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Leave is granted.
Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 325A-19, amendment to the resolution TEP Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Krajewski?
Aye.
325-19, issued to Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
Leave is granted.
Ozog?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lastly, I move on TEP 97A-16, amendment to resolution TEP
Pachowski?
Aye.
Renahan?
Aye.
Rutledge?
97-16, issued to Canon Solutions America.
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
Tornatori?
Leave is granted.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Zay?
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Move on to Transportation. Chairman Pachowski? Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I move to approve DTR 4520, a resolution which is
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
a local public agency agreement between the County of DuPage and the Department of Transportation
D.C.I.?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
with Eldron O'Hare I 390 corridor enhancements.
Aye.
Elliot?
We have motion in second. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Pachowski? Healy?
Aye.
Aye.
Renahan? Krajewski?
Aye.
Aye.
Rutledge? Larson?
Aye.
Aye.
Selman? Noonan?
Aye.
Aye.
Tornatori? Ozog?
Aye.
Aye.
Zay? Motion passes.
Aye.
Move to approve DTR 4620, a local public agency agreement for federal participation
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
between the County of DuPage and the Department of Transportation.
Desart?
Aye.
D.C.I.?
Leave is granted.
Aye.
Move to approve DTP 3720, a contract to Petroleum Traders Corp. for diesel, deliver
Eckoff?
Aye.
Elliott?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
gas and diesel fuel.
Healy?
Aye.
Leave is granted.
Krajewski?
And finally, move to approve DTP 3820, a contract to Lakeside International for Navistar
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Noonan?
Aye.
International, repair and replacement parts.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachowski?
Leave is granted.
Aye.
Thank you.
Renahan?
Thank you, Chairman Pachowski. We'll move on to Old Business. What does Dan say? Something
Aye.
Rutledge?
Aye.
Selman?
Aye.
snappy? This is the part of the agenda where we talk about old business? Does anybody have
Tornatori?
Aye.
Zay?
Aye. any old business to talk about? No old business? We do have one item under New Business. Well,
Chaplin?
Aye.
Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
first, Member Covert?
I just wanted to let everybody know, and the public know, as the Chair of the Census, the Complete Count Committee, along with Member Healy, who's the Vice Chair of the Complete Count Committee as well, the Census is hiring, and they're paying up to $29.50 an hour. So they are looking for recruiting candidates to work on census efforts. And you can go on www.2020census.gov.
Great. Sounds good. Member Noonan first.
Mr. Chairman? I just want to mention tomorrow, and details are still forthcoming, there's going to be a procession for fallen Illinois State Trooper Gregory Reeves. It's going to be from the coroner's office, most likely to some location in Maywood. And I'm guessing the procession's going to be on Quirte Avenue. So if you can, hopefully, we'll post some of this information on our Facebook and our website. And I encourage you to share it, just to inform all of our constituents and everyone around the area. They want to pay their respects. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of all of the board members today, you can find the Giving DuPage 2019 Annual Report. I do want to just point out, on the second page, you can see that over 1,996 volunteers were matched through the Giving DuPage portal, which is a 31% increase from last year. So that's obviously great news for everyone in the county and anyone involved in our wonderful nonprofits in DuPage County. So I encourage all board members to take a look at this, and of course, visit the volunteer portal in their spare time. I also want to recognize Member Selman, who'll be joining the Giving DuPage Board, and actually, looking forward to working with you on that.
Great. Thanks. Thank you. Member Redditch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank Karen Ayala and the Health Department for being so responsive. I think one of the number one things we're seeing in the news today is the coronavirus. We all received a memo regarding it. And I think, you know, if you get questions from residents, constituents, the website is actually quite good, DuPage Health Department, right now. There's information from the CDC, the Illinois Health Department, and DuPage Health Department. So it's a, it's a good beginning to a terrible problem.
Well, you stole my thunder, because they are here, they're going to give us an update here during New Business on the sensitive coronavirus. So, Member Healy first?
If anybody wants to serve on an NACO committee or task force, please get it back to me. Send out an email. I need it by February 4.
Okay. Member Chaplin?
Thank you, Chairman. Oh, Vice Chairman. I just wanted to report on the NAACP Environmental Forum that they had this past Saturday at Cantini. The event was pretty well attended, and we had some nice forums. I know Member Hart and Member Redditch spoke on Stop Stere genics, and they had a, it was just a really nice event. So I look forward to partnering with them on their events going forward.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other New Business? No? At that, Karen, can you please come up and give us an update? I know it's hitting the news all over the country, but I know our Health Department has been on top of this from the beginning.
Absolutely. And joining me today are, is the A Team. I know you introduced yourselves as the B Team.
We're just short.
I brought the A Team with me from Public Health. So we wanted to provide you a quick update on what we know at this moment about the 2019 novel coronavirus. It is a new, it is a new virus, thus the novel word in its title. It has been very recently identified. So many times, it takes a while for a virus to move from animal to animal to human to human to human. This has moved fairly quickly, which is one of the reasons why it has garnered so much attention. The outbreak has been clearly identified to be centering in Wuhan, China. And we began seeing indication of disease spread in December of 2019. Now coronavirus is a family of viruses, a large family, and it includes things that even caused the common cold. Most of the viruses circulate routinely in animals, and then sometimes they pass, they mutate to the point that they're able to spread to, to humans from animals, and then further humans to humans. The family, in our, in recent memory, we remember the SARS-CoV-1 outbreak, which began in China and spread to Canada primarily, but internationally, with over 8,000 cases in 2003, almost 775 deaths. And then more recently, MERS-CoV, the Middle East Respiratory Syndrome, with 20, almost 2,500 cases worldwide, and nearly 858 deaths. So how does the 2019 novel coronavirus spread? Today, we don't exactly know. What we are basing many of our strategies to combat and contain the, the spread of this disease are based on what we saw with MERS and SARS. When person-to-person spread is thought to have happened via respiratory droplets, particularly when infected person coughs or sneezes, very similar to how other viruses, such as the flu virus, spread. There may also be some evidence at this point that when a person has contaminated their hand, or, or mouth, or their hands through touching their mouth or nose, or covering their cough with their hand, or even possibly their eyes, and then touches a, a surface, that then the virus can be picked up if someone touches that same surface. Certainly, we know that in the spread of both SARS and MERS between people, it happened generally through close contact. So it was family members, it was healthcare workers caring for individuals who are sick, and, and those who had extended periods of contact with ill individuals. We are in the very early stages of learning about this novel virus, and the investigations are going. As of yesterday, we initially thought that regarding its transmissibility, we initially thought that it was limited to animal to human. However, now we are seeing that there is, is evidence of the human-to-human transmission. We have clinical illness being presented. Almost all of the cases in the, or all of the cases that are identified for the U.S. have gone through the lab confirmation process. The deaths that have been reported, particularly, particularly those in China, have been involved older individuals with multiple comorbidities. We are currently developing an epidemiologic profile, which means we're, we're gathering data to determine how long a person is infective, what are the spectrum of clinical illness that, that a person can present, and how is specifically this novel COVID virus spread. One strategy that is being employed by the U.S., as well as our North American counterparts in both Mexico and Canada, involves entry screening of passengers from China. Originally, three airports in the U.S. were identified to be screening travelers, and these were identified by CDC because a vast majority of travelers, particularly from this area of China, only entered the U.S. through LAX in Los Angeles, JFK in New York, and San Francisco International Airport. There are the next tier of airports where there are direct arrivals is O'Hare and the Atlanta Airport, and the screening has been expanded to those airports very recently. We have daily calls with the Illinois Department of Public Health, City of Chicago, Cook County, and as you can imagine, the number of visitors from Wuhan has significantly declined as the travel restrictions there are put into place. Individuals who are entering the U.S. from those areas receive a card such as this, as well as the screening. This is the English side. On the back is the Mandarin language translation for individuals to alert them to the fact that they may, what they need to do if in fact they become symptomatic. I'm going to provide you with three terms that are really important as you listen to the news, news reports regarding this disease, because if you mix up these, these terms, it can create unnecessary angst and panic. So first is a contact, a disease contact. That's simply somebody who has had some sort of exposure to, to an individual who is sick. They have no symptoms. So that's a contact. That's the biggest pool of people that we have. After that, it's people under investigation, or persons under investigation. Those are people who have that same contact and have now developed symptoms. But you will see on here that the symptoms that we're looking for with coronavirus are fever, cough, and shortness of breath. So those symptoms are also characteristics of other viruses that are circulating right now. And the third term is case, and those are individuals who, who have, absolutely have the disease based upon laboratory confirmation. Persons under investigation, at this point, our definition involves them having the, the clinical features of fever and lower respiratory illness, as well as, within the last 14 days, a history of travel or close contact with a person who is under investigation for this novel COVID, or close contact with an ill laboratory confirmed case. These numbers on these next two slides are going to dramatically change and increase